Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Welcome to the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission meeting in beautiful Half Moon Bay. We have our meeting for Tuesday, August 14th, 2018. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes. We'll start with Chair Hernandez.
Present.
Vice Chair Hope.
Here.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Devon.
Here.
And Commissioner Benjamin.
Here.
Thank you.
Excellent. The next item we have on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Do we have any comments or questions about the June 12th minutes?
No questions through the chair, but as I was signing up the meeting, I'll be recusing on that vote.
I move that we approve the minutes dated June 12th, 2018.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the minutes for June 26th, 2018. Do we have any comments or questions on those minutes? Can I get a motion?
I move we approve June 26th, 2018 minutes.
Can I get a second?
Or a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving right along. So, we have a few items on the agenda tonight, and I think we need to make some adjustments to the order of events on the agenda. So, at the moment, we have item 1A, which is a coastal development permit for 108 Cabrillo Highway. We have a conflict with one of the planning commissioners. He's not going to be able to participate in this item because he's the architect representing his client. So, what we're going to do is, we're going to move item 1A, I'd like to move item 1A to the end of the agenda, unless there are any concerns. Okay. And then we have, the other two items are 1B and 1C. So, I just wanted to mention that before we get to public comment. Okay, so I have two items that are for public, that are for comment. They're not for public comment. They're just for actual items on the agenda. If anybody would like to address the planning commission for an item that's not on the planning, that's not on the agenda, you're welcome to come up to the lectern and make your comments known. Not seeing anyone, I'm going to close public comment, and I'm going to move to the first public hearing item, which in this case is actually going to be, we have two items, it's another point of mention. We have two items that have a very closely related history. Items 1B and 1C come from a similar subdivision of property. And we have, I'd like to have staff sort of explain what we're going to do here for these, for these two items.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening. So, for 2800 and 2801 Champs-élyse, these are both proposals for single-family homes, and they are separate applications. However, because they were essentially at the same level of readiness for you, we thought it was helpful and in the public interest to bring them to you on the same night, and it was acceptable to the applicants. Yet, I just want to reemphasize that these are separate applications. We will provide separate presentations, and they will have separate public hearings. So, the first one will be 2800, followed by 2801. And we just want to note that, we can imagine there may be some input that is applicable to both, and if somebody is going to comment on the second item and repeat their input, they can simply acknowledge that and really focus on, on the project details that are different than what they want to comment on, on the first item, just because we know we're going to have, it looks like quite a few people here, and we want to make sure that we give everybody enough time. Now, that said, you received this afternoon through our email, and also a hard copy of a memo with supplemental information. And there were about 10 copies back at the table. Some of the folks in the audience are applicant representatives. They also received it in email, so it looks like we probably have enough for everybody. This is a memo conveying additional materials that are applicable to the subdivision for this, this four lot subdivision, for which two lots are before you tonight for new homes. We've received a lot of questions and comments in the last couple of days about the actual processing of the subdivision. We tried to address that in the staff reports, but people really wanted a lot more information in the record. So, we've assembled that, and you will note that there's a bit of volume. You've got your planning commission staff report, a city council staff report, a coastal commission staff report, a letter from the city to the coastal commission, and so that, that will give you some more context about how the subdivision was processed. And we can move through that a little bit later, but to the end, that you have that volume, we note that it's certainly in the planning commission's purview, and you've done this before. If you need to continue either or both items because you need more time with it, that's, that's absolutely fine. We also noted a couple other items that were provided. One was a settlement agreement, and it's more applicable to the first item. And we also received a comment email today, and Scott will cover that when he gets into the actual presentations. So, we hope that, that gets you started, and if you have questions as we go, Sarah and I are prepared to cover those for the subdivision side, and then Scott's your project planner on both of these projects.
Through the chair?
Please.
Yes, what is the appropriate time for me to report an ex parte communication?
You can go ahead and report an ex parte communication now.
Okay, thank you. So, I just wanted to report for the record that I provided a copy of the memo. I received a, a, a copy of the agreement between the city and the applicant and a neighbor of the applicant. So, that is now in the record presently. And I think that, since you have the, you have the thing and the, the copy of the agreement is actually in the record, it's self-explanatory, but I think I owe it to you to note that I, I received that.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other items before we start from the planning commission? So, for the public, I just wanted to mention, some of you haven't been to these types of meetings. This is a hearing, and we have an order and a structure in which we do things. If you, you can't hear. I see.
Is this any better?
Okay. Sorry, it's not very often that people say they can't hear me. Thank you. If, if there are comments to be made, we'll, we'll make sure everybody has a chance to make the comments, but thank you for calling out the fact that you couldn't quite hear me. Appreciate that. All right, so should we turn it over to Scott for presentation? And we will start with item 1B.
And the song? Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. As you mentioned, we're starting off with 2800 Champs-élyse, the new residence proposed there. And, let's see, the, the project itself includes a two-story residence that includes 4,655 square feet, a detached two-car garage with a guest house, you know, landscape improvements, as well as stormwater management improvements, and the requested permits are a coastal development permit and architectural review. The site was posted back in August of last year when an application was submitted, and notice was published in the HMB review, advertising tonight's meeting, and the requested permits. Notices were also sent out to all the neighbors within 300 feet and occupants within 100 feet. The site itself is zone planned unit development and located on the western side of the new cul-de-sac that was recently constructed on the south side of, south end of Champs-élyse Boulevard. The Pullman ditch runs along the northern border of the, the subject property, and the neighborhood to the north is partially developed with predominantly two-story houses. Staloski subdivision improvements are also under construction along the east of the subject property at Pullman Avenue. Some of the items that the planning commission can consider this evening, biological resource assessment, design compatibility, conformance with the zoning code, as well as LCP, drainage and grading, subdivision improvements, and adequacy of the previously adopted CEQA document. So, start, starting off with biological resource assessment, there was a biological report that was attached to the, the initial study mitigated negative declaration that was, was adopted with the tentative parcel map. That was back in 2011. We did have the biological resource assessment updated recently to just verify, you know, get a sense of if there has been any changes on the site since 2011. The biologist, the consulting biologist concluded that there haven't been any substantial changes in relation to biological resources, biological resources, and the mitigation measures associated with the MND that was previously adopted is appropriate for the new house. The site itself is, the design reflects the, sort of the triangular nature of the subject property, so the, so the, the larger portion up front towards Champs-élyse, and the building, as you can see, has a substantial amount of articulation and a side entry garage that's not visible from Champs-élyse Boulevard. And here's the front elevation as proposed, facing Champs-élyse, and you can notice that the front door is visually prominent, which is one of the goals of our design guidelines. I forwarded the chair a copy of the color and material sample that you're welcome to pass around. And notice the minor differences between the, the siding, and you know, the rock base, as well as the, the siding on top. This slide includes the west elevation, and notice the large windows that are placed to capture the views to the west, towards the ocean, and away from the neighboring properties to the north. This slide includes the north and south elevation. You know, due to the, sort of the, the long nature of the subject property, the, the house from these angles does have a sort of elongated point of view. So, this slide includes the eastern portion of the landscape plan, and notice that, one thing that was missed on this, a small portion of the private walking path does encroach into the 30-foot riparian buffer on the north side. A condition has been added that requires that to be relocated slightly south outside of the riparian buffer. And it's city standard practice to require split rail fencing along the 30-foot buffer, buffer line, consistent with the visual resource protection standards. And then this slide includes the western portion of the landscape plan. And note that additional information on landscaping will be required to be submitted with the building permit in conformance with the city's water efficiency and landscape ordinance. Now, as Jill mentioned earlier, we included with the memorandum this evening a copy of the settlement agreement that took place in the past. And within the settlement agreement, there's some language about limiting the amount of development within roughly this portion of the western site. So, that said, we, we are recommending modifications to the project, eliminating the landscaping in the area here, consistent with the settlement agreement. And in this slide, preliminary grading and drainage details were integrated into the site plan and included with the, the plan set. And engineering staff have reviewed both the grading and drainage details, and no concerns were identified. Final grading and drainage plans will be submitted with the building permit. And engineering staff, part of it was that the, the size of the site does provide flexibility on drainage improvements. And engineering's confident that, you know, the drainage and grading details will conform to the stormwater management requirements. Now, as far as the, the initial study and mitigated negative declaration, the proposed residence is located in one of the four lots that were associated with the tentative parcel map, the most western, and the mitigation measures are appropriate for the new house. City staff reviewed the proposed project and did not identify any adverse significant effects on the environment, and the project biologists also reevaluated the site. So, this slide includes the, the final parcel map that was recorded at the county. And let's see, I mentioned this earlier, that the, part of the subdivision improvements are underway right now. And engineering staff has also verified that the other cul-de-sac on the south end of Pullman Avenue is, isn't necessary for the improvements to go in that's included with this, this proposal, due to the Champs-élyse being complete at this time. So, in conclusion, the project is submitted, conforms to the adopted development standards that were associated with the subdivision, and the house is well-designed in compliance with the residential design guidelines, coastal and visual resource sections of our zoning ordinance, mitigation measures are appropriate for the improvements that are, have been proposed. And the memorandum that was forwarded to the planning commission has additional information related to the previous approvals, as well as an email received from a neighboring property owner. Let's see that, let's see it right up. So, we recommend that the planning commission provide the applicant to, for an opportunity to speak, take public comment, evaluate the merits of the project, and I'd be happy to answer any clarifying questions. The, the project biologist is also here if the planning commission has any questions.
Thank you, Scott. It was very succinct, and thank you for the voluminous materials you've provided to us. For the record, I have not had a chance to review the materials we've received in any detail. I haven't had time to do that. We just received these, I just received these today. We were emailing them earlier. Are there any clarifying questions for Scott?
You know, I'm, I'm going to have some later, but I, I need to di, I think it's smarter to digest the material. Like you said, we've just gotten 100 pages tonight on top of the, I don't know how many hundreds of pages that we got on Thursday. So, I'd like to reserve the chance to ask clarifying questions a bit later, if that's all right.
That's fine.
Maybe after we've heard from the public. I don't know if we want to do that tonight.
Brian?
I can withhold clarifying questions till later, but Scott, I don't know if you're prepared to do this, but it seems some of the information that we got here is really summarizing a lot of the history of the property, the original subdivision of the property, different coastal commission reviews, and settlements agreements, and that sort of thing. Are you able to sort of provide a quick summary of that, or Jill or others, just so we kind of have that broader context?
Yeah, I'd be happy to at least give a, a quick synopsis of some of the history on the, the subject property. So, I believe it was back in 2009, an application was submitted for a coastal development permit and tentative parcel map. That project was reviewed by the planning commission, and then ultimately approved, and then the city council also reviewed that on, on appeal. It was, the appeal was denied, and then the decision was appealed to the coastal commission. Coastal commission reviewed the project, the, the appeal, and found no substantial issue with the tentative parcel map. Thus, the, the final city decision remained. So, that was in 2011. After that time, a lawsuit was filed and ultimately settled, and the, the settlement agreement that was included in the memorandum today is, provides detail on the, you know, what was decided on that. And maybe Jill, if you have anything to fill in the blanks there.
I'm going to tweak a couple of your dates. So, the planning commission took this up in 2011. The city council, my understanding, it wasn't an appeal item. The council needed to be the final approver body for the planned unit development plan. And the appeal before the coastal commission was not considered until 2014. And so, there's just a little bit of a, a spread on that timeline, and you'll note the, the dates in these attachments. One of the, the substantive issue of the appeal to the coastal commission was concern about consistency with the city's certified local coastal land use plan and the, the specific policies associated with planned unit developments. And we're interested in listening to, to this public input tonight and hearing your discussion, and we can, we can field more questions about this, but it's definitely, I've even heard folks say this, and I also noted this language in, in some of these materials that received. This is a unique case. It's, it's unusual, and it has an unusual history, and it's, it's actually kind of complicated. So, we, we wanted to acknowledge that in the input that we were getting from community members who were concerned about that process and didn't understand how, how that was done, and why there wasn't a specific plan, but a planned unit development plan instead. And a few other questions around that. So, we think we can stand aside and listen to the input, and then probably field some more of those questions later.
So, just to clarify, I think there'll be obviously questions after we hear from the public. So, I want to, I guess, yeah, I want to make sure that a, the subdivision itself, the PUD, is legal and approved. Am I correct in that assumption? So, we, we aren't here to change that portion of the agreement, are we? I mean, there's no changing.
Yeah, so, so it's, it's been recorded at the county, and there are four legal lots associated with the, what took place with the final parcel map.
So, what we are here to do is to ensure that the project, which are these two residents, fit within the legal requirements that were set up for this PUD. Am I correct in that?
Yes, that's correct. So...
Okay, I, again, I just want to make sure that my focus is on the right side of the coin, so thank you very much for that.
John?
So, Les covered my question. Had the same question.
Let me ask the question in a slightly different way. What planned unit development is this project a part of?
So, it's a portion of the Surf Beach Dunes Beach planned unit development.
So, this is a portion of the Surf Dunes planned unit development. Is there a spec, I thought this was on its own, as its own project?
All right. I think you've just hit the crux of the unique components of this tentative map process and the actual gist of what was the appeal based on to the coastal commission. There's a letter from the interim city manager at the time to the coastal commission that in the same letter refers to this area, both as on its own, as well as makes references to the Surf PUD. It's challenging for the staff that you have on hand because we weren't, pretty much none of us were around, and you have a new city attorney. So, we've been digging through and trying to really understand the history of this so that we can answer your questions clearly. But from what we've read, there's definitely some meddling of whether it's on its own or, or part of Surf Beach, and there's some, apparently some real nuances about that, that we need to spend some more time looking at. That doesn't mean the subdivision isn't legal. Again, going back to that, we think that's very important, but we understand that you're thinking about land use policy consistency.
Right, so the, the part of Les's question is, part of our obligation is to make sure that not only is this a legal lot, which has been registered with the county, the subdivision's been recorded. That seems to be all in order. The question is, where does it sit? Is it on its own, or is it in the Surf Dunes area? And I think that's the question, that's, I guess, the question that we're going to try to understand a little bit more about tonight. Is that fair, Scott or Jill?
It's, it's fair, but I, I think the, the point that we have tonight is that we would, I think the city attorney and I would like a little more time to do that research. The record is before you now, in full. We were taking it as focused on the legal subdivision aspect of it, and the coastal commission's statement about no substantive issue, and that is policy guidance for the city that we need to follow. That said, that the, some of the detailed and specific questions that we've been receiving about which policies it does or doesn't conform to in the LUP are, it's, it's hard to answer those questions, and we, we want to do some more research.
Very good. Thank you. So, through the chair, please.
So, in the questions that you and Les were talking about, I appreciated the general frame. A lot of the conversation was around, in the question used the phrasing planned unit development or PUD. And I just want to emphasize that there is another dimension, which is that these are planned development districts as part of the local coastal program. That's the LCP stuff that is above the PUD stuff in the zoning ordinance and the zoning districts. And I think the questions... And I think the questions that we want to get on the record and get clarity for, it's important to address both dimensions. Also, with respect to the questions of policy and getting everything on the record, I did not have a chance, like you, to go through the supplemental thing, I just didn't see it until it was too late tonight, so that's on me. I think I got it at four something. But in that document, is there a list of the local coastal program policies that appear not only in chapter nine, that pertain to the treatment of PDDs in general, and this PDD in particular, but also the general plan policy that describes the coastal act policies which are adopted into our local coastal program, which is, of course, the standard of review that we use as a planning commission for making our decisions? And that's, I think that is potentially an important distinction, and I don't know if those are in the things that we've just received, if they're not, I just want to be sure they will be.
They are interspersed, and what I think we should do is provide those as well separately as an excerpt, but they are cited in the coastal commission staff report.
One quick point, or a question as far as trying to clarify this, tell me what issues would be different if we're treating this as a Surf Dunes project, as opposed to a standalone project?
I don't think we can answer that question squarely yet. The question of whether this is part of the Surf Beach Dunes PUD, our planned development district, and the applicability of the LCP policies around planning as a whole, we're still looking into how they might impact this project, specifically in how they might impact this, this project at this point in time, given that that issue was already presented to the coastal commission and decided on at the coastal commission. That's an important factor in what we're looking in right now.
Okay, so I've heard the response to our questions, and the city may need more time. Unless there are any other clarifying questions, I'd like to move to public comments, and then after public comments on this item, I'd like to move back to the item. Does the, before, we have the public comment cards here, would the applicant or his representative care to speak, to start?
As we get into this part, is, is the idea that, is the same, is the same applicant going, I'll wait.
All right, Chris, can you give us just one second? Jimmy?
Thank you. So, just, just for clarity in my mind, for the process, it could be that some of the public comment that we hear tonight might be applicable to both, and I recall your comment at the beginning saying we could do, I think we're going to be doing the procedure for one, then the other, and just say agree, that's how we're going to work it? Okay, thank you.
Is the green light on? All right, you might want to get a tad closer, thank you. Okay, how's it working now?
There we go.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right. So, I'm Chris Ridgway, for the third time. You know, on all my buildings, we try to satisfy the functional requirements for the client, but we go beyond that, and I really want to create beautiful and sculptural buildings that are a real joy to live in. So, I'm going to kind of walk through a tour of what I've designed here, and our overview, and kind of incorporate those comments about how we look at the function, and we have a look at the aesthetics at the same time. I'm going to actually start on the upstairs, because it's only three rooms up there, it's actually all one room, there's a kitchen, dining room, and living room, and then a small powder room. And what I did was, I opened up that entire area, and so that there are no columns in that living room, and it really does make a magnificent space. And by putting it upstairs, then I was able to go ahead and have vaulted ceilings, so it's kind of a pyramid with, that's truncated, and so the, you can see on the, great, now I've changed the slide. Can you help me get back, Scott? Great, thank you. I'll try to only click the green button. Okay, can we go back to the overall slide, Scott? Great, okay. So, what I did was, I wanted to make that, all that space open, and accessible, and in a functional way, I wanted to create a room where the family could hang out in the living room, and talk to the people in the dining room, in the kitchen, and have it all open up. And then, on aesthetic sense, it's, I'm really playing with the space that's there, and it's actually exactly square, and with this geometry, it becomes very kind of interesting, and supports the, what I was trying to do. The windows are very important on this project here, there's beautiful views that, if you look to the east of the mountains, and then it cascades down, and then you look to the west, and there's the ocean. So, it was a no-brainer that I wanted to really capture that, and we put all the windows, large windows on this side. But it's also real important to us, is how we relate to the neighbors. So, on the opposite side, the north side of the building, we have very few windows, and they're very small, and they're only really used for ventilation. And so, we were able to kind of turn this building, so it looked to the south, and didn't, and look into the other buildings of the existing neighborhood that's to the north. Going back to kind of, and let's see, I can have you change it, Scott, if you could, to the next rendering, that sounds great. So, this kind of shows the corner window that we're here, and as an architect, one hand, I'm trying to play with the kind of the mass and space, so you can see the big, thick columns that are very strong, and then the, the ceiling is, has a steel beam that's bent that goes across the top, and that allows that ceiling to kind of float in that area. And then I, it's, as I mentioned, it's an exact square, the upper plan, but I kind of wanted to break away from the corner, and rather than having to put a big column in the corner, I opened up the glass, so it's actually butts to each other. And so, it makes it really great to look at the ocean, and it's functional, and it's aesthetic, and that's kind of the concept I was trying to integrate from the beginning, was to make it work for my client, and also work aesthetically. We're going to go downstairs, and I'll rely on Scott to get to the, thank you. So, it's important to us, as we look at a house, is to really kind of feel inviting and welcomed, and here we made a very large front porch, and once again, I'm kind of playing with space, where I've got it defined on the floor and the ceiling, and then I have the large columns and the low walls that kind of define this porch, so you can really get a feel of some shelter and protection there, as you're waiting to go in the front door. As we look at other aesthetic principles, our vision is two-dimensional, just like this rendering is two-dimensional, and to be able to kind of look through the porch, and see the house beyond, and see the landscape beyond, what it does is, it kind of integrates very visually, in a very direct way, the house into the landscape, and so that's what I was trying to achieve there. If Scott could go back to the overall plan, that'd be great, thank you, I really appreciate it, help. So, you can also see there's a courtyard to the left of the space, and we wanted to accomplish the same things on the courtyard that we did on the upstairs, we wanted to get really good privacy between the neighborhood that's to the north, so we put the bedroom wings along that area, and then a loggia that opens up, and then once again, we're trying to bring the light and the warmth, the sun, into the space. And then also on the coast, if you can block that wind that comes from the northwest, that's in the spring and the fall, the wind that kind of kicks up in the afternoon, then the building really acts as a protection for that courtyard. The storms come in from the southwest, so, but no one's going to be sitting out there at that time of day. So, I wanted to talk about the size of this lot, it's thirty thousand, thirty-one thousand six hundred and ninety-nine square feet. If, a lot of lots in Half Bay are five thousand square feet, so this makes it six times larger than a lot of those lots, just so you get an idea of the scale of what we have here. The house itself is four thousand one hundred and twenty square feet, without the garage, and then as we take a look at the floor area, we have to add the garage into it, and our house is four thousand six hundred and fifty-five square feet, and if we divide that by the lot area, which is thirty-one thousand six hundred and ninety square feet, we're only covering fourteen percent of the lot. Typical houses in Half Moon Bay cover fifty percent of the lot. So, it was really great to have a client that wanted to do a large house, and really went and bought a large property for it, so we're not even close to what other houses cover. And it really, it's a great opportunity as an architect to really kind of blend it into the landscape, and not have it shoved up against the neighbors. Let me go a little bit more into the lot coverage. The lot coverage is how much the building covers the lot, irrespective of whether it's on one or two stories, and we're at thirteen percent on lot coverage, and thirty-five percent is allowed. So, we're almost a third, two-thirds less than, than what the maximum on a typical lot would require. So, once again, we have lots, a very large area that's very well landscaped around this house. I'd like to address the neighbors, to the north, we talked a little bit about that, because of the Pullman ditch, there's a thirty-foot buffer zone on that area, so most houses are five or ten feet away from the property line, we're thirty feet, which makes a huge difference on how this house approaches the neighbors. In the very beginning of the property process, we approached the neighbors that were most close to the property, that had an existing house, and their names are Joe and Carol Farrell. And so, we really wanted, since that was the house that would be really impacted by this house, we wanted to really talk to them and see what we could do. And so, by putting the two-story mass that's more to the east side, it allows the one-story mass of the courtyard, which is adjacent to their house. And they've had, have a kind of unusual house, where it's kind of split level, as a result, they can kind of see, by keeping the roof low, they can kind of see more of the coast than that. And then we also cut back the house an additional ten feet on the west side, so I met with them when we've had first done the very first design, and we really did work with them to try to make this house fit with their house. Additionally, I had a gable roof on the far end, and we changed that to a hip roof, and they really felt that would help have their angled view of the coast side, so they had asked me if we could cut down the trees, and I said, that's, that's not, we're not allowed to cut down the trees, as far as I know. So, anyhow, we're trying to preserve the view that they do have, and be considerate neighbors. I should say that this house kind of lies to the south of the residential development that's to the north, and there will be obviously a development that's to the south, and so this house kind of acts as a buffer, or a shield, where it, it blocks the view of the neighborhood into that area, and obviously, my client doesn't mind looking down into that area that they're planning. Overall, we're underneath the height limit, and we're only at the height limit at that one little area at the very top of the roof, so the house is not tall, and, and then we also wanted to use solar panels on the house, and they can obviously look pretty, like an add-on. So, we're going to put the solar panels on the flat portion of the roof, and so they'll be hidden, but we'll still be able to have that. My client, John, it's been great to work with, and we've talked a lot about the materials that we're going to use, and all the materials are really high-quality, so starting from the roof down, we have fired clay shingles, made by Glading McBean, and of those, they're not arched like a Spanish, they are flat, but the nice thing is they're fireproof, and because they're a natural material, when they're fired, they flash in slightly different colors, so it doesn't look, and then also additionally, those roof tiles are very thick, and look substantial. So, that seemed like a good choice for that. And then as I work down, the top, some of the top walls have, we put wood on it, and we used redwood, and so that gives the building a soft, slightly softer feel to it, which is nice, it's all copper gutters. And then, on the stone that's so prominent on the building, on the elevations, you see the, I showed them on the front porch, that stone wraps around the entire house. That stone's all real stone, it's not culture stone, it's not fake stone, it won't look like a thin veneer, and, and on top of it, those columns are all twenty-four inches square or larger, so it really feels a nice, strong, and having that nice mass. Additionally, at the top of the stone, we put limestone caps that are cut to, and so it's just another nice transition material, and so I'm, I'm very fortunate to be able to work with a client that can afford this. As far as the landscaping is concerned, we used almost all drought-resistant plants. What I did at the very start of the project is, I went down to the park that's right down there, Francis Park, and they have a book that a friend of mine was a co-author on, about the native plants that are on the coast side, and I went through and identified, as I went out, the coastal trail right here, the plants that were actually still, that were growing there, and they've done a beautiful job of, I mean, I really got to compliment the park surface, it's like walking through a garden, and we really wanted to kind of extend that idea, and obviously, those plants don't take a lot of water, they're native, they thrive, and so that's what we did on the landscaping. And in an overall way, we wanted the building to kind of step into the landscaping, and we did that in several different ways, as the roof cascades down, but then you can also see that there's a wall outside the master bedroom, that, there's two walls, and one is a berm, and so we really wanted to bring the building into the landscape, and the landscape into the building, and so we really wanted to integrate the two together. So, in summary, we wanted to do a beautiful house that was respectful of the neighbors, appropriate size, and well suited to the lot, and I'm sure you'll have questions, and I'll do my best to answer them. Thank you, Chris, it's a magnificent design. Thank you. I would comment that it's really nice to have professional architect present a project, as opposed to some of the other things that we've had, so I really appreciate the work that you've put in here. Any other, any questions for the applicant, or for Chris Ridgway?
Actually, do have a question. So, I noticed there's a separate, what looks like a guest bedroom, guest loft, was there any consideration in making that a full accessory dwelling unit, or?
It was something I suggested to my client, let me give you, I didn't really talk much about the bedrooms and the layout, and this ties into that, so I'll digress into that. There's a master bedroom in the main house, and then the courtyard has a series of small, and what my client wants to do is have a family house, where his kids and their kids can come and really hang out at the beach, and so it isn't like they plan to have a guest house that would be rentable, or anyway for somebody else, they just, it might be nice to have, it's nice that all those rooms are in the heart of the house, but they will be kids running up and down and stuff, and I suggested, why don't we go ahead and put one more unit in the very back, that if somebody wanted to come and be a little more private, they could, and, and as an architect, you're always trying to balance those public and those private spaces, and this was the way to do it. It is obviously allowed to have the accessory dwelling unit, and that's exactly what it is in floor plan, but that isn't really the concept behind it. Does that answer your question, Brian? Thank you. I had one other question, living in a passive solar Chris Ridgway design that shares some very similar elements to this one, you have windows facing, they'll be exposed to the sun for a great portion of the day, what care have you taken into the ventilation? It can get stifling in a passive solar room if you don't have ceiling fans, or ways to evacuate the hot air? You're going to make me look at the plans, Rick, it's been a while since I drew them, so let me get, get out my glasses for the first time, and see what I can be accurate about. Well, I might just make it as more of a general comment, as you go through the final design, you might want to just make sure that you've. Sure. For the ventilation, because. I appreciate the feedback from a client. Very bright days that we get, that are far and few between, it can get a little
Very bright days that we get that are far and few between, it can get a little warm.
Yeah. If you look at the floor plan on the upstairs, there's a pair of doors that I didn't talk about that leads out to an outside terrace. And so now that we're talking about the terrace, we put a solid stone wall on the north side. So once again, that upstairs area would not be looking down into the neighbors. And then going back more to your question is, you'll see there's double, there's actually two sets of bifold doors, and they opposite, opposite, they open opposite each other. So that's about, I think, around thirteen feet of wall that will open wide open. And obviously, that'll ventilate the space. As you look at the other, the, the corner windows are fixed by nature, just because they butt the glass together. And then on the windows that face due south, we'll have to get into the design, they're big windows, and can they be operated? But I feel confident very much about the, the windows, that door really opening up that whole space. We obviously, on the upstairs, the only window we have is in that little bathroom is for obviously light and ventilation. So I think that, that, that is the room that gets the most glass. There is downstairs kind of a solarium that's meant to get warm. But I think that, I appreciate your comments, and we'll make sure as we develop the plan that we get the light, the heat, and be able to get it out.
Thank you. No other questions? Okay, I'm going to open it up to, okay, sorry. John.
Hi, Chris. I noticed this on the presentation, there was this private pathway. And I'm, first time I'm really looking at the project is when it came to us here. Can you tell me more about why there's a private path and?
Yeah. We wanted to have, as I kind of mentioned this, they do such a beautiful job on that coastal trail. But if you end up doing just that, first of all, how do you do the maintenance without tromping through all the plants? And of course, it'd be nice that you have the property, even though he's not developing it, and there's a huge area to the west, to be able to take a short walk and walk around your, your property and enjoy it. And so that's the concept of the, of the paths that go through it. And, and does that answer your question, though, John?
Well, what, what makes it private? Is it, I'm, I'm just curious. I'm not criticizing or, you know, I'm just curious about.
Maybe it's just more terminology. It's a, it's a garden pathway, and that's all we meant to imply. So maybe it isn't private. Just, it might be semantics.
Okay.
It's a walkway through the garden.
So people that are in the neighborhood can kind of walk through there as well?
No, I'm sorry, it is private. Okay. Now we're
The gate or something?
It is on their property. As Jill mentioned earlier, there'll have to be a split rail fence that divides the Pullman ditch and the repairing corridor. And so as soon as you put that in, you put a house in, it isn't like we can welcome the neighbors to walk across the property. So I'm glad you clarified that. So yeah. It's pri, it's private in ownership, it's kind of public because it's open. So, okay.
And we'll have more comments when we get to reviewing the project.
I'm sure you will.
Thank you. So I have four comment cards for items one B and one C. So Mike Farrar, Sierra Club, followed by Walter Sensing.
Good evening, Chair Hernandez and Commissioners. I'm not here to discuss the architecture of the project or the size or the appearance. I, I'm more concerned about the LCP aspects of the project. In your LCP for this particular PUD, it says, "A specific plan for the entire site shall be done." Shall. The word shall, very important word. Other areas of the LCP where it talks about PUDs in general, it uses the word "may." That's because some PUDs do not require a specific plan. When this went to the Planning Commission the first time, the staff report did not use the language that you said "shall." It appropriated the language that said "may" and gave that as the reason for no specific When it went to the Coastal Commission, it took a while to get up for a decision. The staff report was extremely strong for denial, mostly on two reasons. One was the lack of a specific plan that should have been executed. The other was for some biological problems regarding Pullman ditch. Some of you, and out here, you're not familiar with the Coastal Commission hearing process. And it always starts with substantial issue hearing, which nearly always is agreed to when you have a staff recommendation for denial. You know, it's extremely rare. Maybe this is the only time that a recommendation for denial did not get a substantial issue hearing, because there was one commissioner, an attorney who should have known better, addressed the issue and went on a fit regarding the biological report, never addressing the specific plan. Staff pushed back and said, you know, you, you have to, you have to find substantial issue, and then we'll go into a hearing and deal with this. She didn't listen to him. You had to see the horrified look on the commissioners, the commission staff's faces as she made the motion for no substantial issue and got a nine to two vote. Following that breach of process, the executive director of the Coastal Commission penned a twelve-page memo at the very next meeting about the process that they breached and that they are supposed to follow in all future time. I will provide it for the record. And that's just what I'm here for. Don't care much about the houses. If they had done a specific plan, build four houses. I'm fine. But what's happened is because that one commissioner did that one hard-to-understand thing, after being lobbied, I'm sure, you've got a mess. The Coastal, if the Coastal Commission had said, "We'll take substantial issue and we'll go in here, and we're going to dittle with this because it's now in our authority," they could have done things that would have, if they chose to separate this somehow from the, what's in our LCP. But they didn't. Instead, the mess gets thrown to you, and that's what's in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Walter Sensing, followed by Paulette Eisen.
Thank you. Am I still on? Yes. My name's Walter Sensing. I'm from Half Moon Bay. I live about a half a mile from this project. And I'd first like to say that I completely agree with the concerns that, that Mike has raised. I could, I can't say that any more succinctly than, than, than what he presented. I do take some exception after looking at the diagrams, the architectural drawings, and would like to say that I, I kind of see this project as fitting more into someplace like Texas down on the west side of Highway One. And, and the fact that, that somehow we've gotten here by some shenanigans, it seems to me, in the past, because this is not clean and straightforward. And as Jill had, had said earlier, and I, I think everybody's kind of confused by the whole process. I don't think I'm alone. It just seems like we, we put the cart before the horse in a sense, that we're, we're kind of stepping on our own LCP to approve a project that doesn't really belong in this location. I'm, I'm going to further say that the, the view out through these windows is not going to be very pretty if the rest of the project on that land gets approved, when you're looking at an RV park and a hotel. It's going to kind of damage your view just a little bit. So there's a lot of inconsistencies, and I think a specific plan would have brought all that to bear. And without it, we've got a hodgepodge, and I don't believe the project holds together in the way that it should for the community, for the environment along the Pullman ditch. And that's essentially all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Paulette Eisen, followed by Dave Shore.
Okay. I was going to start with, how did we get here? But Mike Ferrera put some of it in perspective, but I'm still confused about this, what I'm reading January seventeenth, 2012, to, addressed to the mayor and the city council through Laura Snyderman, who used to be our city manager, she's no longer here. And it's from Steve Flint, the planning director, who is no longer here. So, but the one person who is here and who was on the Planning Commission at that point, it looks like, is our man Les. And I am hoping actually that Les can, you know, sort of elucidate, like let us understand how the heck this happened, that the LCP, sorry, the PUD, which we, I think most of us understand is supposed to have a plan, and as Mike Ferrera said, in this particular PUD, the wording is "shall have a plan." How did this happen, that this got subdivided out? What is the behind-the-scenes story there? Because I think it's real important to understand this, because we're all concerned. Everybody who lives in Half Moon Bay at this point, if you really talk to them, will tell you they're all very concerned about development, about how development happens, and how things are supposed to happen regarding the PUDs. And what the, what the situation is going forward as well, not because this is potentially a precedent-setting situation. So I think having real clarity on how this came about and what it really means and how we move forward is essential to, to any project that's involved with this PUD. Thanks.
Thank you. Dave Shore. And if anybody else has any comments, please complete a card.
Good evening, Dave Shore, 423 St. Joseph Avenue. Is this on? Okay, good. Thanks. With no disrespect to Scott and the design of a lovely home, but the issues are procedural and planning-related and land use-related. Scott stated that this subdivision is part of the Dunes PUD. Let's take that as fact. As such, it's, this development is then in conflict with the existing land use policies that Mike mentioned and Jimmy called out and several others mentioned, including Jill. These irregularities are problematic. If you split the subdivision off and say it's not part of the PUD anymore, you've created a potentially dangerous precedent. I also want to raise the, the word of piecemealing as it applies to several aspects of this project. Just considering twenty-eight hundred and twenty-eight oh one separately as separate agenda items is prima facie piecemealing, because these are, these are developments on the same subdivision, which is part of the same Dunes development. There are two more parcels in the subdivision, which will later be developed, no doubt, which will be further piecemealing. And piecemealing, as we know, is impermissible under SEQA. So we've got another conflict that we've got to resolve here in this. Lastly, or not lastly, but we also have the issue of conflicting financial interests. The developer of twenty-eight hundred is also a co-owner of the Dunes, the larger Dunes project, from my understanding. Therefore, any financial benefit which accrues to development of twenty-eight hundred is part and parcel of the economic value of developing the entire PUD, which requires the specific plan. So when you look at the issue of takings, the issue of investment-backed expectations for a developer of the entire PUD, which Mr. Vidovic is part of, the benefit which accrues to him from development of this parcel must be balanced against any claims of takings or, or prejudice against his development of the larger project. So these are all very thorny issues. So I think what a lot of you are touching on, is the approval granted by the Coastal Commission to develop these four half-acre parcels with the unusual situation surrounding them, is that subservient to, or is it above the LCP policies of this parcel, the Dunes project, in its entirety, requiring a specific plan before any development goes forward? I think it wouldn't, it's, it would be a legal question. I think it might not be inconsistent to say, yes, you're allowing building permits for these parcels. However, that shall not go forward until the specific plan for the entire development is considered. That would allow you to conform with both your LCP policy of developing the specific plan while not denying the applicant the ability to develop those parcels. There are undoubtedly more issues that will come up, but the issues of the irregularities, the piecemealing across several aspects of this project need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. The applicant's representative would like to, the applicant would like to, please.
My name's John Vidovic. Can you hear me? This is my house, and I want my family to live there. And I bought the lot from Mr. Stoloski. Is he here? Right? And I've been listening to, to an argument, a process. There is land next door that has been assembled, so it can go through with a development that is, that considers all the land in the, the zone. What appears to have happened here is Mr. Stoloski brought a subdivision before the Planning Commission, and with the staff approval, they considered it separately from, from the whole project. But the subdivision went through. It went through the council. It was appealed because it, it wasn't on the idea that you couldn't do it separately. It was appealed. And the Coastal Commission said it was okay. They said this project could go forward. The project created a subdivision of four lots. The use is residential. There's no other use. It's not hotel use. The subdivision itself had a lot of criteria that was given that are not normal for regular subdivisions. So you've created a special land use that, that has been accepted. And, you know, I bought the lot, but other people, innocent people are buying the lots. And there's an expectation that according to the rules, you can build a house, a residential house on that lot, and the commission can, you know, help make sure those houses are designed. And regardless of what gets built on the rest of it, you know, that, I think, is, that question of this piece has been resolved. It was resolved separately from considering the whole. And to hold it up for the rest of the land is, does not make any sense. So, you know, I don't know if what I said, it's not the legal jargon, but I, I think you have a subdivision, it's in your purview, you can continue this, and maybe we can get a legal opinion on it. But I think it's in your purview, and it's your time to, to help make sure that the residential development there is compatible. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? If not, I'm going to close public comment. And bring it back to the Planning Commission for discussion.
So Les, how did we get here? So sometime around 2011, we had a project, just like we have a project over here, and somebody presented it, that we want to take this land, put it in a PUD, and build four houses. Okay? So we looked at, we looked at the environmental side, four houses, you know, there's a lot more houses in Half Moon Bay than four. So we're going to build four more, as long as it meets the standards that we set for the PUD. We approved it, City Council approved it, and the Coastal Commission approved it. And so here you have four lots. Do we need a plan for four lots? I don't think so, as long as it meets the criteria set up by the, by the Planning Commission, by the City Council, by the Coastal Commission, as well as by the, the contracts between the parties. And I think it's our And I think it's our, and coming on us, to in fact ensure that the houses, first one, then two, eventually three and four, meet the qualifications that we set out. I mean, I think that's what we're legally bound to do, and that's what I'm here to do today, is to take, ensure that this, that the house on, whatever the address is, on this lot, and the other house, in effect, meet the standards that we set back in 2011, and that were, I guess, changed in 2014.
Good history. I did want to ask a clarifying question. The question of piecemealing was brought up. I don't, my understanding is that doesn't apply in a subdivision in this type, you have individual projects.
That's right. The question of piecemealing under SEQA doesn't really seem to be applicable here. First off, the applicant prepared a neg deck for the four lots back in, a mitigated negative declaration under SEQA, back when the subdivision was approved, so that these four lots were looked at together at that time. And we've reevaluated whether this proposed project has any differences from the evaluation that was done at that time, a new biological assessment was prepared, and we don't see any significant issues that have been changed since that time. Also, just as a legal matter, piecemealing really only applies when the projects cannot be built separately. And here in this case, because we've already done the infrastructure necessary to serve those lots, you can consider the project separately.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask a follow-up question on that, though? If, and I'm trying to wrap my mind all around this, and I'll have some other comments just on the process stuff, but just to clarify on that question. If there's a PUD that requires a specific plan, and then there's a separate subdivision that moves forward within that PUD, separate of the broader specific plan and the broader PUD, and then we start looking at individual projects on those, on those parcels, you know, whether it meets the legal requirement of piecemealing or not, that somewhat smacks me of piecemealing.
Well, I think there's two separate issues here. There's the question of piecemealing under SEQA, which is whether your environmental review had to contain the remainder of the project. Here, there's nothing in this project that links it to the development, it's Surf Dunes Beach. You know, there's not a road that's being created through this project that would facilitate the development there. The only thing that links it is the plan, and whether and how the policy in the LCP applies to this project as a whole.
To follow up on Brian's question, we've been spending a lot of time reading the old LCP and the new LCP as we go through this revision process. The language is pretty clear that for this PDD, PUD, it requires a specific plan for any development. And it's not ambiguous, it's a "shall." And so I understand we've created a legal lot, but we have a legal lot that exists without a specific plan. And so, like, we either need to have a specific plan for the PUD, or we need to, to me, we need to have a specific plan for the PUD, or we need to say this isn't part of the PUD, and this is actually something unto itself. I don't, I mean, can you, is that the right way to look at this?
It's definitely the right questions that we are asking, and the questions that staff are currently evaluating. There's a long history here, and I think particularly from a legal perspective, one of the things that we're looking at is the preclusive effect of the prior commission decision. So these issues as to whether the subdivision could move forward, given that there was no specific plan prepared, have already been raised in the appeal to the coastal commission. And so one of the things that staff is continuing to evaluate is whether and how that has an impact on the sort of realm of what you can consider at this point in time, whether that decision has been sort of decided already, both internally here at the city and then also by the coastal commission. We're also looking at the history of whether or not this is, in fact, part of Surf Dunes Beach, the PUD. The language in the LCP and in prior city staff reports and documents is unclear on this point. And it is difficult to tell whether it was intended to be part of that PUD, or whether it was sort of a separate area between the two, between the subdivision to the north and the Surf Dunes Beach proper. So as I said, we're continuing to look at these issues, I apologize that we are not quite there yet.
Well, I mean, just having read the staff reports, and not, I mean, I perused the one that went to the city council that we just received. I, there's certainly inconsistencies, but the way I would read that staff report is, it's part of a planned unit development, but it doesn't call out the language specific to Surf Dunes, so, which is, it shall have a specific plan. I mean, it just strikes me.
Are you talking about the old staff report or the current one?
The old staff report, yeah. The old staff report, like, the least one to the city, the city council.
Sure.
Read through it. Anyway, I'm sure you're gonna look into this. My concern is, what is this? And it's more about, the whole point of having the LCP, I think, is, Les, I mean, I know that we've gone through, a subdivision has been created, the question is, what is this and where does it sit? Because if we allow development in an area without a specific plan, when the LCP calls for it, the first finding we have to look at is, is this consistent with the LCP? And if there's no specific plan that sits in Surf Dunes, then I think that's a difficult line to tow. Now, we can go do an amendment, it's small, and we can go figure out what this is, but it's, that's the concern.
So I've heard the words "plan." Okay? We have four lots, we're gonna have four houses. Plan. Plan is to ensure that it meets the environmental standards that we set up, that's already in here. Plan is it has utilities, it has access roads, that's already been approved. So I hear the word "plan," I don't understand, I guess from the comments I've heard, you know, plan to have access for public? Is that the plan on four lots? Is a plan to have a park there? I mean, we approved the PUD with four lots, and the lots were approved. What we did not approve, which we're doing today, are the residences that would appear on those lots. And, I mean, I'm here, after reading this, is to make sure that those residences in the four lots meet the requirements that were set up in this PUD, as well as meet whatever city zoning ordinances that we have on these things, so.
So if I, if I.
That's where I'm coming from. I just, I just wanna let you know my, where I'm coming from on this. People wanting to know that by, it's too large, there's plenty of huge houses in that area, that it's, you know, it's gonna lead to something else, only gonna lead to something else if we, on the planning commission, approve.
Yeah, yeah. So I think there's, I think I'd like to look at this from two perspectives. City staff have already raised the recommendation that we take the time to do the legal evaluations. We've had public comment, we've had the presentation on the project. I'd like to continue a little bit of the discussion on the land piece, but we're gonna also have the second project, which is gonna have some of these things. Perhaps we can spend a little bit of time looking at the architectural review component of the project and provide feedback, if any, if you guys are.
I would. I, my sense is that I've heard that there's a lot of additional analysis that needs to be done in some of these areas related to some of the legal questions, the Surf Beach PUD, and others. And frankly, I just don't feel that this is really ready for primetime, either of these two. And I would make a motion that we continue these both. I don't want to get too far down the road of talking about, discussing the merits of the project. I mean, I think it's really nice design and everything else, but until some of those big questions get decided, I feel like we're, you know, kind of having a conversation with, on quicksand. So I would, I would make a motion that we continue both of these items until staff can come back with a full summary of how this fits in with the PUD and the other areas.
Could I ask a question before we go forward with that motion?
I'll second the motion, so that we can have a discussion about it.
Okay, so can we have a discussion about this item, since we have a motion and we're not putting it to vote? Is your question, John, related to what Brian, the motion Brian just put forward, or is it related to a separate item?
I think it's related.
Okay, great.
Kind of in comatose here. Will we get to the point where our staff and our legal representation can tell us, here's some land that we've allowed the off-site improvements to start happening, and they've been built? And you'll be able to say with clarity that as a commissioner, this is either legal or it's not, and then we can go ahead with analyzing the actual projects that are on? Will we be able to get to that point?
We think you will. We will definitely get to that point. However, you can consider providing feedback about the project design. And, you know, you've, we've got a notice-public hearing, and we just, staff wants to remind the commission that we are taking these two items, one after the other, they were not combined. And so just for your consideration, if you're going to continue the items, we would encourage you to do it one by one. And the applicant is here for the second item, we have a presentation ready for the second item. And that time and public comment was provided for the first, so I am concerned about not providing for that for the second item. Thank you.
So just to summarize, we have duly noticed items, one of which hasn't been presented yet. We also have a motion which has been seconded to continue both items immediately. If you want to continue with that, then I think protocol requires us to have a vote.
I can withdraw or amend that motion to continue the current item. Are we on 2800, Sean, please?
Okay.
It's acceptable to the second.
All right, very good. Okay, so I don't think we're, so we have some open issues on the land side of it. Do you want to continue the discussion around, I mean, I've got your feedback, I think it's very clear. And I think I've expressed my concern about the project on the land, the history of the lot.
If I might, before the vote. I just, you asked a question, Les, about planned, what do we mean, what's the concern about planned? There's a plan, there's something in front of us, it's a subdivision. And we have, we have been a little careless in our language with respect to planned unit developments and planned development districts. They are different concepts in our, in our body of law, in our, in our local coastal program, and in our zoning ordinance. And they impose separate requirements. And the issues that it seems to me that were the focus of the 2010 work were the PUD, and not so much the PDD. My feeling is that there is additional research to be done. I am conscious of what has taken place, and I appreciate the, that the applicant has gone to some efforts to improve the area, and I'm not complaining about the architecture, that's not what this is about for me. But I do feel like, independently of the previous approval for the subdivision, we are now being asked to give an additional approval, an approval for construction. That's a different act of development than the development that had previously been approved. And I want to be crystal clear in the concern that I have about this with respect to development. And I'm happy to learn more from our legal staff and our professional staff as they unravel the mysteries of this. But the language in the existing staff report quotes Coastal Act 30625C, which says that we're gonna be guided by the coastal commission. I went back and looked at the language, it actually says, "We are to be guided, when applicable, by these decisions." So the coastal commission has clearly shown that there's a space for us to show deference, and we at the planning commission are defining the body of the record on which the decisions will be considered. So it's important for us to exercise our discretion. And perhaps we differ in what that discretion should be. But in my mind, I'm very clear that without a specific plan for the planned development district that this lot is located in, this is an inconsistent act of development with our local coastal program. And the local coastal program is the standard of review that the planning commission uses when considering development. That is not an intractable problem, because we can act to alter our land use plan, we can amend our land use designation maps. So this is not an attempt to shadow, deny a project. It is to try to make the mess that exists more legal. And I think it's really important, if those concepts don't make sense to any of us, or to anyone in the public that wants clarity, for us to have as long a conversation as we need to about that. And I want to, I am conscious that staff is new to the game, and that there's a lot going on here, a lot of moving parts. And I want them to have the time, without pressure from proponents or opponents, to get the job done carefully and right, so that we don't find ourselves with people who are more angry. As you know, the Surf Dunes Beach area is a highly pressurized topic in our town. And so we need to show the public that we are worthy of their trust, and that the applicant, that we respect his property rights. And the space in between those isn't as wide as we might think, based on the 2010 record. That is why I strongly feel we should continue this item, and after hearing the design concerns that may come to fore after the presentation on the second item, to continue it as well. I hope that is a respectful communication of why I feel so strongly about this. Thank you.
Can I have another question? Just so I understand what I'm being asked to do here. So I think the staff suggested that we review the actual architecture that's in front of us. And so if we do that, then the only step the applicant has to go through is whether or not he's allowed to build there at all. And we're wanting to say, since we don't have the answer to the question whether or not this is an appropriate building site, a legal, and then the second question I have with that is, is there some chance that any of the development standards would change?
Right, so, so I think that you're.
If we take the time to review this and there's some changes, and I understand from the applicant's point of view, they have to go through this review twice, so.
I mean, we operate in the world where we have the architectural review and the permit process, generally, we do those all together. I think, consistent with what we've done in the past, we're being asked, well, we have a project in front of us, we're not gonna be able to make a final decision on the project today. Boy, it'd be great if we gave the applicant feedback on the architectural design, so if there are any major issues, like it's too tall, or it doesn't fit in, or things like this, we get those out in the open now, so that we don't unnecessarily slow the project down at some future stage because we're adding some other layer to this down the road. I think, and I, Brian, I heard you withdraw your motion. I think my inclination is to continue the project, but I would like to capture any design feedback we have, with the understanding that, one, our, the opinion of the commission may change in the future based on either new facts that come to light, or new restrictions that come to light, or the fact that the planning commission may have different members in the future. So is that a reasonable?
I think it's fine. I question the utility of it, just because, like I say, kind of, you need to take one step at a time.
step at a time. And, you know, I think it sort of sends a message that, yeah, we're going to go through and we're going to work out all the details, but, you know, the big questions, you know, we need to, we need to get some other, you know, some legal feedback and other things. I personally don't, don't like that. I would like to know that, you know, we're moving forward on, you know, solid legal ground, consistent with, with the PUD and consistent with the approvals that have happened in the past, and then we can talk about the details. But if the commission wishes to, you know, dive in and provide comments on the architecture, I'm not necessarily going to oppose that.
I support continuing this.
Okay, then go ahead and make the motion.
So I will make the motion that we continue the, what's that? Yeah, PDP seventeen zero fifty-five for twenty-eight hundred Champs-Elysees Boulevard.
I second.
Can I get a roll call vote?
Could you repeat the motion?
I believe we have, go ahead.
A simple continuance of the item that's in front of us, PDP one seven zero five five for twenty-eight hundred Champs-Elysees Boulevard to, to a time when staff is prepared to bring it back to us.
A question from the secondor, so that would be to a date uncertain?
To a date uncertain.
Okay.
I want to give staff the opportunity to take the time they need.
I want to just jump in for a second. I'm looking over to my attorney. I know we've sort of gone a different path from your recommendation, but are you okay with this approach? Is there, are there?
Yes, this is fine. There's been issues raised sort of in the last couple of days that we're looking into further. I would also note that I'm just filling in for Heather tonight, and so some of my preliminary assessments may not be what she is ultimately going to say to you.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, I have a point of clarification here. So what exactly are we asking for when this is being brought back to us?
What we're asking for is a staff and legal review regarding this project's consistency with the Surf Beach PUD and, PDD?
That's the local.
Sorry, I should be in the microphone. Yeah, I'll, I'll answer after you answer. I have my own view about this.
So that's, that's, that's my understanding. The PUD and, and I would appreciate, yeah, chronological, chronological history of just what's been approved and how we've got here so we can put together the whole scene. So, so the underlying land use approvals.
So for my part, as the secondor, I hope you'll let me answer as well. I understand that there was a land, a PUD plan prepared in 2010 and that was approved by the city council. My concerns are at the local coastal program level, that there is a specific plan that is consistent with the policies of the local coastal program that require a specific plan for the Surf Beach, Dunes Beach, Planned Development District. I can't find any evidence of such a plan existing. I also am, I am, I want to be open to the possibility that as staff researches this, they may find other issues. For example, in the last couple of days, it became clear that the path that runs to the west is inconsistent with an agreement to which the city is a party. And so, rather than restricting the scope of their research, I would appreciate it, and I think staff would welcome, the flexibility to really do a careful top-down analysis of this and find the right approach so that we can have a staff report that reflects clarity on what requirements new development requires to be consistent with. And although our, our basis for review is the LCP and its implementation plan, they may well want to consider other things such as the agreement that Magda signed on behalf of the city with respect to that, the restrictions and that further restricted area that Scott showed in one of his slides during our presentation. I don't know what else they're going to uncover, but I want them to have the time to do the job right with all of the information that they need. And that's why the continuance isn't, from my perspective, I seconded a motion that had them having a broad range to bring their research back after they've got all of the ducks in a row. I hope that explains.
I ask for some other clarification. Will we get from staff a checklist that we are required to answer so that we can go ahead with this project? I mean, I don't want to have to go back in two or three weeks and re-circle this. I mean, I want to make sure that whatever we, we get, here's the questions you have to answer, et cetera, et cetera, so that either jay or nay, as opposed to just going round and round in the circle. Are you able to do that? Or do you, or do you need more clarification from us?
Well, I think the question is, can we get a staff report that provides a clear path forward or option A, option B? But we don't want to have to try to piecemeal this at a Planning Commission meeting in the future.
We appreciate that. The, the next time this comes before you, it will be with a recommendation for how to proceed. It may have options based on what we find and based on further discussions perhaps with the applicant, but we will have that clarity for you.
Great, thank you. Then I'd like to get a voice vote on the motion to continue this item to a date uncertain.
Okay, excuse me, motion to continue. Start with Chair Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Holt?
Yes.
Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes.
And Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
Yeah, item's continued.
Okay, item one C.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. So this is a, directly across the cul-de-sac from the previously, previous project that was reviewed this evening. Address is twenty-eight oh one Champs-Elysees. And this slide includes a photograph that was taken several months ago before the story poles were installed. The project includes also a two-story house totaling three thousand three hundred and fifteen square feet and a, an attached garage. The staff report description did have a slight typo stating detached. It's actually a attached garage set back from the, the main wall of the house. So the site was posted back in January when the application was submitted. And similar to the other project, we posted in the newspaper and sent notices out to the neighboring property owners. Here's a aerial photograph with the, the site and surrounding area. It's one of the middle lots of the Stoloski subdivision. And this slide includes a rendering of the proposed home. And then I also have the key points, similar to the other project, for the Planning Commission to consider. Biological map prepared during the biological update and, you know, very similar points to the previous project, just shifted to the, to the east. So this slide is the proposed site plan. I do have a slide with the colors and materials. And notice that the, you know, the, the two-story house does provide a limited footprint. Front elevation, notice the large prominent front porch that wraps around the, the south East elevation, the, the rock base has been brought around to all sides of the house, which is one of the recommendations within our design guidelines. South and north elevations, you know, this home does have some similarities to the, the two homes directly to the, the north that were recently reviewed by the Planning Commission. And here are the color and materials sample. Landscape plan, the project biologists did review the landscape plan and plant palette and similar to the other one, that no invasive plants or otherwise harmful plants were identified within the plant palette. And then this slide includes the grading and drainage plan. This has been reviewed by our engineering staff and staff is confident that the design and the drainage improvements will be able to conform to the current storm water management requirements in diverting drainage away from the Pullman ditch itself. So, as mentioned earlier, this lot was part of the, the tenanted parcel map for the Stoloski subdivision. So, you know, the biological report was prepared back in 2011 and then updated recently. And here's the final parcel map showing the, the building footprint here within the parcel And then this is a more recent slide showing the story poles that were installed. And in summary, the project does conform to the development standards that were associated with the subdivision. The house does conform to the design guidelines. And similar to the other project, the mitigation measures from the previous ISM and D are appropriate for the, the improvements that are proposed on the site. We did not receive any correspondence on this particular project. Let's see, any, but the memorandum that was prepared and include, the staff reports do include this project site as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. The project biologist is also here as well as the project applicant.
Any clarifying questions for Scott?
No questions. Thank you.
So I have four comment cards for both items. If anybody would like to speak about item one C, and you've already submitted a comment card, you're welcome to go to the stand. If you haven't submitted a comment card and you still want to make a comment, you can go ahead and speak now. And if the applicant would like to present or speak, you're welcome to, please come up to the lectern and. Good evening. Please make sure the green light is all the way on.
Green light is on. My name is Lisa Wellman. I'm the designer on this project. My company is based out of San Carlos called Plan A Design Group. Overall, you can see the home. The main comments that I wanted to make was the size and the scale of the property and the house. This lot, as described on our site data, is over fifteen thousand square feet. The home itself, the, the lot coverage is currently at sixteen percent, so like the other project, small in comparison to what's available to cover on the lot at the thirty-five percent. The current, the proposed living area is twenty-nine hundred square feet totaling the garage, the, the total square footage or, is three thousand three hundred and fifteen. So, nice family home. The way that the home has been designed, it has the open floor plan on the ground floor with the two-car garage and the open great room kitchen with a guest bedroom on the first floor and then the remaining four bedrooms and a master suite, or including a master suite on the second floor. A nice beautiful wraparound porch to enjoy the gorgeous views and the lovely weather. Any architectural questions or comments? We're here to answer them.
I think it's a, it's a very pleasant design. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
I did have one question. It actually is relevant to the, Chris's presentation as well, but you don't have to answer for him. And that was, I noticed the stonework. And when I moved from relatively stable Florida to shaky California, I remember reading Peter Yanev's book, Peace of Mind in Earthquake Country. And it said that it's not a good idea to use stone beyond a facade in a place that does a lot of rocking and rolling. So can you tell me whether the stone in this design is real stone? And if so, is it, does it present a seismic hazard?
It's currently specified as an El Dorado stone, which is a manufactured material. It is not a real natural stone.
So it just breaks off in bitty pieces?
Correct. And it's, it's low enough that if, if a piece did fall, you know, we're not taking it very high that it could cause any damage.
I apologize for not raising that earlier. And then another safety-oriented question that I had for, for you. I know that both of these homes are adjacent to the Pullman Water Course. I know that we have a tsunami map, a tsunami inundation zone map, and in general, they don't show the bores of the tsunami and where the water, how, you know, in general, the bore, which is the part that runs up a waterway, goes up somewhat further than other areas. Do we know where, where the, you know, what that map's picture is for the tsunami bore?
I do not.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Carrie Burke would like to make some public comments.
Carrie Burke for Stoloski Gonzales. And just wanted to provide a little bit more background on the previous actions by the Planning Commission, the city council, and the Coastal Commission. This was before the staff for two years. It was fully analyzed. It wasn't a very fast project by any means for the subdivision. I do encourage you to, since you just received it tonight, since there was interest, to go back and to review the original Planning Commission staff report in December of 2011. It does discuss the PUD. It does discuss the zoning. It is confusing, as Commissioner Benjamin mentioned, because we have zoning and we, PUD and we have PD in our general plan, but they are discussed in the staff report. This is a very unique parcel. It was a remnant between two approved subdivisions. And a lot of the narrative in the Surf Beach speaks specifically to the map, the recorded Surf Beach map. And this is a remnant, a triangular piece that was undeveloped. It doesn't have accepted streets. It doesn't have the things that were recorded on the county's map for Surf Beach, which I believe that the goal of the general plan was to, in the future, that you could remedy some of those types of subdivisions with a creative design. This project was its own creative design. It was very thoughtful with the PUD standards that are adopted, that these, this project adheres to. And that was really within this small area, that was to be its own planned area. So we just, hopefully with your review, more specifically, but there were some real strong reasons that this parcel related more to Naples with this, and that the stubbed-out streets that these people lived with those, now we have beautiful cul-de-sacs that provide better access for the entire neighborhood. There were a lot of important ideas that was a transitional zone to the Surf Beach subdivision, so that there were a lot of thoughtful reasoning that went into why this was viewed, given the ownership pattern, the, the size, the design of the parcel, the fact it wasn't part, it was, was absolutely deliberately left out of the two subdivisions, that this would stand on its own. Thank you.
Thank you for a little more historical context. Okay, I'm going to close public comment. I'm going to move it back to the Planning Commission. So I think. So, I think, unless there are other comments on this project, the only thing that I have is, following up on Jimmy's question, I pulled up in the draft of the coastal hazards document. We don't yet have a tsunami, current tsunami map, but given the project's location, it'd be helpful to consider that. So, do I have a moment? Yes, sir.
I just had one other comment. When I went and visited the site, it is a lovely site. We're not the only ones who think so. I saw some, I actually got a picture of a couple of deer that were enjoying the foraging on the site. But what I noticed in addition to that was that contrary to the description that the trees adjacent to the water course were going to be carefully guarded, it looked to me like some of them had sustained some pretty heavy damage. And so, I want to be sure that the construction practices are modified, so that does not happen anymore, and that the damage that has occurred to those trees is fully repaired. Usually, putting in trees, you have to accommodate a certain amount of die-off. In a riparian restoration project, there's a ratio for some trees of like five to one. And so, I don't know what, you know, I'm not a landscape architect kind of guy, but I want to be sure that we, you know, have the appropriate restoration with mitigation and monitoring for the unpermitted destruction that has already occurred, and we avoid having any more of that in the future. Other than that, my comments are basically the same as they were for the last project.
I think that's a good point, and you do have a history of applying a three-to-one or five-to-one type ratio for projects where...
Fortunately, we have a, we have a community development director who lives to garden, so we're going to learn a lot from her and the experts that she brings to bear.
Well, we do have an inventory, so we can always reference the inventories for both projects. So, any other comments or questions?
Well, I, since I made the last motion, I'll make the motion here too, but I just want to say, you know, nothing here is, not taking any position on either of these projects. I think both of them are really nicely designed, and I really appreciate the historic perspective on this being a remnant parcel, or remnant subdivision between two different PUDs, and I think, you know, looking at the map, that makes a lot of sense. So, I'm hoping when this is brought back, we'll be able to have a clear record that can really establish kind of how we can move this forward without it being sort of tangled up with a bunch of other stuff. So with that, I would move that we continue PDP 1-8004 for 2800 Champs-Elysees Boulevard to, to a date uncertain.
Can I get a second?
Just to be clear, that was for 2801 Champs-Elysees?
2801 Champs-Elysees.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Through the chair, just before people leave, we, staff wants to provide a little bit of information to follow up on this. The memo that was provided to you tonight and its attachments will be posted on the planning commission website tomorrow. The local coastal land use plan policy excerpts relative to plan development districts generally, as well as the Surf Dunes Plan Development District will also be posted, and we will get our hands on that executive director memo that we heard about tonight from public speaker and post that as well. We will get you a tsunami map, and I just want to note going forward, it may be that these two projects converged at a point tonight, it's very likely that they won't come back together again, and we'll be pacing ourselves as appropriate to the applicants. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Please.
In addition to those lists, there was an, there's a policy in chapter one of the LCP that lists the coastal act policies that are adopted as part of our local coastal plan. Please include that. Thank you.
Okay, so, item C on the agenda is closed, and we're moving to item 1A. So, what do you want to do? Refuse, I hope you're planning to refuse. Hide for free, just refuse. Okay. Yeah, all right, so, what's the refusal process here? Okay. All right, so, so, why don't we take a five-minute, or two-minute, five-minute break? All right, so, I'm going to, we're going to... Jill, are you ready?
Yeah.
So, we're going to go ahead and get started again. Okay, we're moving on to item 1A. So, before we get started, John?
Being the project architect and at the advice of the city's council, I'm recusing myself for this portion of the meeting.
Okay, so, we're going to banish you to the back room, and, great, thank you, John. Okay, so, take it away.
Good evening, Chairman Hernandez, commissioners. For the record, I'm Doug Garrison, City, Half Moon Bay Senior Planner. Before we get started, I do want to clarify a little confusion. There was a staff report which had the resolution and conditions of approval circulated in a normal manner. We received some comments yesterday, and in response to that, we added three additional conditions. So, that resolution was attached to an addendum, a memo-style report, and then due to my lack of word processing skills, there was an error in that one. So, there's a third resolution, which I believe is the one you have in front of you. And just to be clear, if you have a resolution and condition A10, if there are two construction hours conditions, that's the wrong one. It should be one construction hours, and then A11 is the fence one. That's the correct one. So, this is the project location, otherwise known as BK Motors, right on Highway One, just north of the Main Street intersection. It's kind of sandwiched between the Straffour, Strafflower Village Shopping Center and Highway One. It's two parcels that are adjacent to each other, all under the same ownership and used for two or three different businesses, all under the same ownership. So, the area up front is the BK Motors Car Dealership. On the next lot, there is the Yellow House, which is currently rented out as office space. And then on the rear, that large paved area, that's currently used to store recreational vehicles and boats, that sort of thing. So, the, what's proposed here is to replace the RV and boat parking with something similar to a mini warehouse, where you'd bring in shipping containers, line them up in neat rows, and then rent them out for onsite storage. These would be either new containers or refurbished containers, matching paint. So, there would be up to fifty of these rental containers that people could use onsite to store their belongings in or access property. The other aspect of this is there are currently three driveways that access this two lots. One of them doesn't get used much, the one that's the most southern. It's, it provides access for the garbage truck to come in and pick up the dumpster. As part of this project, that driveway will be closed. The dumpster will be relocated to the other side of the parcel. And then there'll be some improvements to the existing fences to make it a little bit nicer with the neighbors to the north, the residential properties. So, just to go back to those new conditions, we added a condition A8 that puts in some restrictions on people storing hazardous materials in the storage units. A9 just ensures that noise won't exceed what's allowed under the city regulations, especially with the residential properties. And then, it clarifies that these are for onsite storage. This is not a sort of industrial site where you, you load up a container, put it on a ship, and take it out, and another one comes in. These, these containers are brought to the site, they're left there, people come in, put their stuff in there. So, this is, I think, kind of the best way to understand this project, if you look at this sort of bird's eye aerial. You can see the residential properties, a pretty good idea of how the recreational vehicles are laid out. The, the two driveways show up pretty well here. Right now, people can come and go how they choose. With this, it'll be one way in, one way out. We think it cleans up what's already kind of a pretty difficult section of Highway One, being that close to the Main Street traffic signal and the shopping center entrance. And as you can see, the entire lot is basically paved, so in terms of bringing in these storage unit, the containers, they come in, they lay down some pressure-eyed lumber, put the containers on top of them, and that's it. Doesn't affect the drainage on the site. The water can still sheet flow into the existing catch basin and stormwater system. On the site plan, it's a little bit harder to read, but this was looked at from an engineering standpoint. It was reviewed by the city engineer, as well as the fire district. Make sure that it met all the requirements for fire truck access, for truck turning movements. Also looked at the drainage. Conclusion was that the, since these containers are actually off the ground by two to four inches, it's not like putting up new buildings where you would really have to reconsider how, how stormwater would drain off the site. In this case, it's still going to flow by gravity to where it's been going. This is the driveway that's going to be closed off. This is the one that's closest to the Main Street traffic signal. I just happened to be there on a day when the dumpster was out front. Typically, it's behind that little wooden fence. In this case, the Caltrans right-of-way extends down to, I believe, about where that utility pole is. And so, what the applicant will do, if this is approved, as a condition of approval, is put up a gate there and stop using that driveway. That will keep the, you know, the garbage truck doesn't come in and have to back up across the bicycle pedestrian trail, back out into Highway One. It'll just be a much safer situation. The condition further stipulates that in two years, if this operation is still going, they'll permanently pull up that driveway, extend the landscaping from here over to here, take out the curbs. They'll remove these yellow rumble strips here and the bollards, and this will just be a nice continuous path through here. This is the existing fence that separates the residences from the RV parking and boat parking. You can see some of these RVs are actually taller than the storage units would be. And that, that part of the fence, depending on whether you're standing on the asphalt side or the natural grade on the other side, is about seven or eight feet high. So, we think that'll do a pretty nice job of screening the, the storage containers from, you know, the neighbors. We've also put in a condition that requires they add additional material on the project side to enhance the soundproofing, so that there won't be little cracks between the slats, and there'll be a little more dead airspace in there that will... We don't expect this to be a very noisy operation, but it's something that we think is a good There is one little section of fence that's shorter, it's five or six feet tall. That'll be replaced with one that matches the others at eight feet total, and so that should help also. So, when we got this project, it was kind of interesting. It didn't fit into, very neatly, into our regulations. It seems to be like a mini warehouse, mini storage kind of facility, but there's no And it's pretty clear, the zoning code sites, mini storage facilities is requiring a use Due to the low threshold for development, triggering a coastal development permit, it also triggered that. And, so the issues we looked at is, does it change the intensity of use here? If you're going from twenty-something parking spaces to up to fifty of these storage units, is that really doubling the intensity of use? And we looked at the international traffic engineers' trip generation numbers for this type of facility, and it's nominal. It's a pretty passive use. They predict six to twelve trips a day. We don't have any reliable information on what a RV and boat storage yard would generate, but it's, it's not going to be a significant magnitude of difference between the two. We consider it equivalent. And with the improvements to the driveway access, we think it'll just be better and generally safer for everybody along the Highway One frontage there. There, the proposed project with these containers that are, that are not strictly speaking structures, but we treated them that way when we looked at setbacks, height limits, all of that, and it meets all the zoning code requirements. A couple of things on the existing site don't really conform with a couple of our zoning requirements. There is a requirement that if you have a commercial property and next door it's residential, you're supposed to build a six-foot-high concrete wall or put in ten feet of landscaping. This has a wooden fence that everybody seems to like, including the neighbors, so it didn't really make sense to... really make sense to change that. That's why we came up with the solution of just improving the fence so it was a uniform height, better soundproofing abilities. We would consider the fence legal non-conforming. This is just making it less conforming, that and the driveway. We also put in a condition that in five years, the project will come back to the planning commission for review, just to make sure that everything is working out there. Also, that coincides with the housing element update. This is a relatively high-profile property. We don't know, someday this may not be the highest and best use for this property. It could be something that would be included in our inventory for mixed use in the future. Because of the sort of temporary nature of these storage units, it meshes nicely with that. If the applicant, Mr. K., decides to move on to bigger and better things, this, you know, he can pack them up and move away. So those were some of the considerations we looked at in this. So in conclusion, it meets our development regulations in the land use plan and the zoning ordinance. From a design review standpoint, we think it's compatible with the neighboring uses. So we are recommending approval of the coastal development permit, the use permit, and the site design. That concludes my presentation.
Great, thank you. And I'd be remiss if I didn't also mention that I have had ex parte communications with the applicant. I'm a customer of BK Motors. I was getting coffee the other day, and we chatted about the project for a few minutes. Just want to put that in the public record. Any clarifying questions for Doug?
So, welcome. So first question, picking up where the last question, since the last one went off, which was seismic. These things, these twenty TU's, I guess they are, they're the big containers, the kind you'd see on ships, that's what I'm visualizing. They're going to be sitting on something like the thickness of a railroad tie or something like that, or...
Approximately, yeah. As I understand it, it will be treasure, pressure-treated lumber, I'm assuming two-by-four, four-by-four thickness, something in that range.
And is there some seismic standard that we expect them to meet so we know we're not putting people in harm's way?
Since it's not subject to building code, I don't believe there is a seismic standard.
Is there electrical? Will these things be lit up?
The applicant has stated that there will be no additional lighting on the site or electrical connections to the units, as well as no additional water.
So maybe there'll be battery lights inside or something like that? People got to be able to see inside. Twenty TU is pretty big, but no new power. Okay. Then about sound. So I get the improvement, and I appreciate the citation of the noise ordinance, relevant section of noise ordinance. When I think about, you know, I'm not a boater, so I could be way off on this, you can help me out. But when I think about, you know, getting on and off a boat or opening or closing an RV door, and then I compare that to the sound of that steel door closing, those are qualitatively different. And that steel door closing is not going to trigger the CNEL limits of our, you know, of our state noise law. But it has the potential to be a little bit jarring, I think. And I want, I'm not saying that this is a showstopper issue, but I wonder if there are conditions that we could consider, you know, maybe some rubber stoppers on the doors or something that would lessen the damage and allow it to still form seals where it needs to form seals.
Well, I'll defer to Mr. K. to answer whether that's, if he can put some weather stripping around the edges of the doors, or if they have that already. I will say, these noises will be, you're right, they wouldn't really show up in CNEL where we're looking at a twenty-four-hour or even a one-hour standard because they're going to be pretty infrequent. As I understand it, the hours will be limited to essentially the same hours that the car dealerships open, so it would not be late night. But again, I assume you could put some kind of weather stripping or something along the doors, but I just don't know.
Yeah, to be clear, I am, and weather stripping is good. I'm looking for an acoustic quality, you know, some kind of buffering to reduce the sound of a door slamming shut.
Right. Well, I'm saying that it would be something spongy that would accomplish that.
Right, right. We have the same vision there. Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Yeah, two questions. One, you just kind of alluded to the hours of operation there. So I don't see a condition here that limits the hour of operation. Would it be a twenty-four-hour facility, or it would be limited to the operating hours?
We have not imposed a specific limit on it. The discussions we've had with Mr. K. were that he would essentially keep it open only during the hours when they were there at the car dealership. And then at night, there'd be an electric gate, but the renters would not have access to the facility unless the owner or employees were on site. I suppose we could add, you know, some hour limit if there's something that we can all agree on.
Yeah, maybe if we hear from Mr. K. in a bit, if we might hear if he might be willing to accept some hours of operation, just I know that's been, it's a problem at some other of these storage facilities, the late-night use or that type of thing, people using them for, you know, maybe purposes that we might not necessarily want. The other thing, from a visual aesthetic point of view, I mean, would these storage containers be sort of, kind of like what I see at Port of Oakland, just sort of a bunch of, mixes a bunch of different types of storage units? Or are they going to have a uniform look? Is there going to be one sort of consistent color?
What we have discussed is that these will either be brand-new units, so they're not just getting things that they can't put on ships anymore. Or they'll be refurbished units, but they'll all be painted a uniform color, sort of a light tan or green, basically a subdued color, and it'll be consistent, you know, throughout the property, is the understanding that I have of it.
Okay, thank you.
I think several of my questions were answered. The safety one being one, however, want to make sure that, given our homeless problem, that this is not going to be an issue there, since it's adjacent to where we had problems before. The other one is lighting. You know, I think that you might want some lighting there for safety purposes, too, but downward, obviously, shining lighting. I'm really not sure how much lighting there is right now. Might ask the applicant for that. But, you know, certainly from a safety standpoint, I think that's critical. The last question was, do you know anything about, will there be a year or two transition from the RV to these containers? Will it happen all at once? What is the cycle of it?
My understanding is that he intends to bring the containers in maybe five or six at a time, partly to allow the RV and the boaters to have time to, you know, find other places. They're not going to just get a thirty-day notice, and they're all evicted, and they're all parked all over Happy Bay. And I wanted to make it clear in the staff report that this design was put together with fifty units being what seemed like it would fit on there and still allow room for truck turning and that sort of thing. So we've stated that's the maximum. It is conceivable that as he brings these in, he might get to a lower number and say the demand just isn't there, maybe I want to keep renting out some RV spaces. And there is a condition in the resolution that permits that. It's subject to approval from the planning director, community development director. Essentially, we would have to review that and make sure that the, you know, the egress access, the truck turning, fire, you know, they're not obstructing things, it just doesn't turn into a random collection of stuff. But we don't have any issue with it having both if that's how it turns out, as long as we get a chance to take a look at it and make sure that it makes sense the way it's laid out.
I understand it's not a structure, but as I look at this and we talk about the question of safety, when we were just talking about Chancelay's Boulevard, where we've had some discussions around fire truck access, has this had any review by the fire department? Or does it...
Yes, we routed the plans to the fire, coast side fire district. They reviewed it. They said the twenty-foot-wide paved access was fine. They had a few conditions about, you know, putting a Knox lock on the gate and things like that, but it was, the site plan worked fine for them.
Great, thank you. No other questions? Yes?
A question that triggered my interest. I'm glad you raised it. I, you know, I had assumed that the RVs and the boats were unoccupied in the storage, in the facility right now, that there was, you know, no existing someone that was storing there, but it was kind of, you know, using it because there was not an alternative living space. Is that a correct assumption?
As far as I know, and Mr. K. can address how they secure the property and patrol it and that sort of thing, but people living in it would not be consistent with any of our city regulations at this point.
Yeah, I just didn't know if, you know, what's permitted and what happens sometimes aren't always the same. And I don't mean that with respect to this parcel. I mean it in the creek, I mean it all over the place.
We've had some discussions, some of the questions were, some of the fences that separate this property from the shopping center are chain-linked, and we kind of discussed, is it better to sort of spruce these up and put up wood here or something that would sort of, you know, give a little more, you know, a buffer here? And again, Mr. K. can address this, but apparently the sheriff's office patrols the shopping center pretty often, and they have noted that they like having that see-through fence because they, sometimes they do see people hanging around and don't seem like they belong, and it's easier for them to stay on top of it.
I see. And then in terms of both, you know, I think we've tried to anticipate the issues from the perspective of the neighbors. It may be that we've missed something, and five years is a long time for some neighbor to deal with some unexpected impact. And I wonder if there's some, if we can add some kind of, you know, have it come back to us after a year or two years, if you think a year isn't enough, where if the neighbors are saying, you know, this thing is driving me crazy, and I, which is not to anticipate that it will, but just so the neighbors feel like they have a chance to weigh in without being sentenced to five years or something because we messed up and missed it.
Well, I don't have a strong position one way or the other. I would say that if he is bringing in the containers, say five or six at a time, it may take a couple of years before it really gets up to a level of activity where the neighbors might notice. So that would be one consideration. I think coming back in one year might be a little bit soon because we won't really know what the full impact is. There is the condition we added that specifically says they have to comply with the city noise standards for measuring decibels at the fence line. I suppose if we had complaints, I mean, we could send somebody out there to, you know, set up a decimal meter and see what's going on, and then, I don't know, it's not a perfect response.
Honestly, I'm not anticipating a violation of the standard. It's a pretty crappy standard, if you'll let me say so. But I think that we, you know, if I were a neighbor, I'd like to know that there was some safety valve that I could deal with for significant adverse unanticipated issues and not feel like I've got to just live with it going forward for an extended, for five years. But that was just a question where we're still in question time, so I'm done. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. K., would you like to? If you haven't cottoned on yet, please make sure the green light is all the way on and you're speaking clearly into the microphone.
So I'm Bob K. I own 108 and 112 North Cabrillo Highway. And I actually, if you'd like, I've got photographs of what the containers would look like. Would you folks like to take a look? All the containers are going to be brand-new, the twenty footers, and then the forty footers will be refurbished. There, there'll be several, there'll be a majority of them will be eight-by-ten storage units, like what's on the front page there, and then there'll be some that are twenty footers and then some for forty footers. As far as the noise level goes, even on the, not so much on the roll-up doors, but on the big doors that you open and close, they close very slowly and actually very softly. They're so heavy, you can't slam them. Kevin Palmer's got one over there that I've opened and closed several times, and it takes a lot of muscle to close the door, so I don't think the noise will be an issue. There won't be any electrical needed. Again, we'll probably put battery-operated lights inside the units, so that'll be taken care of. Won't be any plumbing. Let's see. As far as the term on how long I could do that, I've got a significant investment in buying these. I'm buying them outright. And the payback is three to four years. So I'd like at least, when I saw the five years, I was hoping for a longer period, but if I can get at least five years, that would be great. If there's a noise issue, which I doubt there'll be, let me address it. Let me know what it is, and I'll address it. As far as the empty RVs, all those RVs, I have a policy there that those motorhomes and RVs, nobody can live in those. There's no repairs to be done, it's strictly for parking. Currently, all the tenants have a key to the gate. They come in, close the gate, lock it when they leave, but they do have twenty-four-hour access. With the storage facility, it's going to be a seven-to-seven, twelve-hour period that it's open. There'll be a wrought-iron gate on there, it'll have a combination that they'll have, but it'll, there's a timer on there, and it'll shut the gate down so nobody can come in after the hours that we set it. I'm pretty much down there almost seven days a week, so I know what goes on down at that place. And so there won't be any issues with any homeless or anything going on down there. I think most of you have been by the lot. You see, I keep it pretty clean. That's my whole idea with that whole facility, is to keep it nice and neat. You know, it's making the most use of the property right now, and there's a big need for it in town for self-storage. As far as the tenants that are in there right now, they've all been great tenants, a lot of them have been there for nine or ten years. So basically, what I'm going to do is I'll probably have like a three- or four-month notice I give them, and then I'm going to look around and try to find another place for them to go. So that way, they're not stuck with, you know, having to park them in front of their house and have the city come down on them. So, and it's going to take me, you know, I was asked a question if I was going to buy all the units right away and bring them in. I'm not. I'm probably going to do four or five at a time, get them stationeryed in there, and then, as far as, they take about a month to build as far as converting them, and when they come in, they'll come in one day at a time. So I might get one on a Monday, one on a Wednesday, one the following week. So we're not going to have a trailer of containers coming down Highway one into my place on one day. Let's see, what else we've got here? So I think that's about it. I mean, we've put a lot of thought, a lot of time into it. It's going to be a nice, clean facility. It'll be a lot neater than what's there now with the boats and the RVs and the motorhomes. As it was mentioned with Doug, the storage containers sit below the fence line, so it won't be that noticeable from the people, from the residents on the other side. Yeah, I think it'll be a nice addition, and hopefully you guys will approve it and give me the time extension on it, too, so I can pay them off. So, great. Thank you very much.
If I could just ask one question of the applicant?
Please.
So you mentioned the hours of operation would be seven to seven. Would you be willing to commit to that as being a condition of approval?
Sure, yeah.
Seven days a week, yeah?
Yeah.
Is there any lighting back there now, and will there continue to be lighting back there?
There's not any lighting back there right now, and in a sense, it's kind of pros and cons to that. It's at nighttime, you know, with the, with having the set hours of seven to seven, it's actually better if there's no lighting back there because when the sheriffs, the sheriffs actually, I've spoken to them several times about the back lot there, and they actually drive down through that driveway behind Starbucks, and they like to have that fence open back there, so, because they've told me several times, we used to have a gate that was open back there at Starbucks, and they would see people going through there. We've recently shut that gate off and chained it off. And so with no lighting back there, I think it's actually better because if there is lighting back there, somebody shouldn't be back there. And I think the sheriff's department will see that, and they'll go investigate it. Down the road, we might do something with maybe some motion detectors or something back there. I'll probably eventually set up some cameras back there. So as I go along, I'll enhance it, but I want it to be a really nice, clean facility back there. back there, it's not going to be a, a place for homeless people to go, or for people to run extension cords in there, and, and there's no mechanical work, any kind of activity like that, strictly storage. And we want to make sure that what they're storing in there is legal and not toxic, and they keep it that way.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Great, thanks.
I have one comment card for item 1A. Mike Farrar's not here, so, oh, Dave Shore, please.
Just a couple of quick things, some of which you guys touched on already. I concur, noise is not an issue, I spend a reasonable amount of time going in and out of a storage container for the library, and yet the doors are heavy, they don't slam. The biggest risk is squeaking of the hinges, if you keep them oiled, it's a, you're doing a favor to your tenants as well, so just good maintenance, I really don't see it, I wouldn't anticipate a noise problem. Lighting, less touched on that, and I understand no lighting back there, but even with hours of seven-to-seven, Bob, like in winter, it's dark around 4:30, and a lot of people won't be comfortable going back there. Maybe battery-operated motion detectors, LEDs now allow us to put lighting where we couldn't before without running, running cabling. All, I don't know-
Could you direct your comments to us?
Sorry, yeah, well, we're all here. But any lighting, you know, I would think that safety might be a concern for the customers in the winter hours when it gets dark early. I don't know what city code is on it, but I would hope that city code is incorporating dark skies and downlighting as a policy, so that if there is lighting, whether it's permanent, or temporary, or battery-powered, it's not increasing glare in the area, and LEDs are much more focused, they really help with that. The only other thing that comes to mind is, on the plot plan, and the idea of this being a different appearance than cars which are currently below the fence line, and some RVs which are above the fence line, these are going to be uniform containers, seven-and-a-half to eight feet high on their, on their little standoffs. I bicycle and/or drive past this place a couple of times a day, pretty much. And one concern is the highway, the roadbed is four to five feet above the elevation of that back lot. So you're actually not looking across at it, you're, in large part, especially if you have a uniform profile of eight-foot-high containers, you're, at some points, you're looking down on it, I think it might be a little bit more visible than you think. You can't change the height of the containers, I'm wondering if some, a couple of additional plant, there's some trees and shrubbery there, I'm wondering if it's feasible to look at putting some additional plantings around some of the perimeters of the, of the property at points where it is visible from the bikeway, pedestrian way, and roadway. Just consider it from the elevation of the roadway, not as if the, the plot itself is flat. But that would be, you know, because I, I do think, right now, the, the appearance there is intermittent, it's broken up, there's some cars you can't see, some RVs you can sort of see. Once you have more of a monolithic blocking of metal containers, it may be more visible than you think, especially with that elevation difference from the bike path. That's it, just things to consider, I don't know how you want to incorporate that, but...
Thank you, Dave. I'm pulling up Google Street View, looking at the property, curious about that. Okay, I'm going to bring it back to, oh, absolutely. I'm opening it up, yeah, it's still open for public, it's still open for public comments.
So regarding, regarding the, the height of them from the street, I can go back and take a look, but I think from where the, looking at the plans from where the containers will be, that area from the street looking in, I believe that's going to be somewhat of an open area there, I mean, I can go back and check it, but I think the majority of the, of the containers, if you look at the two rows on the plans, they're actually behind the two buildings, the dealership building and another building that we've got there, so I'm not too sure how far, but I can check it, and that, but, yeah, we were really concerned about making sure that it's not an ugly sight when you drive by, that's what we don't want, and that, but I think we've got them far enough over to the left where, where the driveway is at, where you can actually see down when you walk down the coastal trail, I think that area's open because that's part of the, part of the turnaround for the fire truck and for the customers to come in and out. So I think we might be okay, but I can check it.
You mean the Naomi Patridge Trail?
Yeah, yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm looking at the street view from, from here, I mean, I can see an RV, but it's not, you guys can make your own view on that, but, okay. I don't have any other questions. I don't have any other, there's no other public speakers, and there's only one other attendee. I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the planning commissioner.
So, thank you for the flexibility, I appreciate your explanations and for your comments, Dave, on the project, I feel like I learned a lot about storage facilities. And I'm, based on your comments, I'm comfortable with addressing the squeak and not worrying about the door slam. I also am okay with the five years. You seem like the kind of guy who, if your neighbors contacted you and had a concern that you'd be a good neighbor, and tried to address their concerns, and, you know, you don't always see that at the planning commission, so that gives me some comfort. And I look forward to having all of my expectations met five years from now, if I'm still here. I, I also appreciate the, the light issue. When I saw the pictures, and I, I, I do worry a little about, about those things falling off, I'd like to think that those wood standoffs are firmly attached, rather than just something that they're resting on, that there's some kind of lag bolt or something that's tying them in, something that makes them a little bit more secure, as opposed to something that heavy that could roll off in an earthquake. And I, you know, I defer to staff on how that gets done, but I want to be sure that we've given real consideration, this thing is sort of in the seams of our zoning ordinance, and I want to be sure that we get the kind of safety that we're looking for, for this thing, so that if, if we get some ground shaking, that somebody who's nearby doesn't end up getting a foot stuck under one of these things because he was in the wrong place at the wrong time. And I know you won't want that either, so. We've closed the hearing, you'd have to open it back up.
I'll open up for a public comment. We prefer to hear you.
Sorry.
Just so it's recorded.
So on the storage containers, as, the pressure-treated two-by-fours, they're put in several different spots on the, on the containers, and usually they're put the whole length of the, the eight-foot width on each end, and then in between, and that's pretty standard practice throughout all the storage facilities that use the shipping containers. If the staff needs, I can get some offline, show how they're, how they're done, but that's just pretty much the, the nature of how it's done throughout the industry. And I, I think with them so, so low to the ground, there's not a, a chance that they're going to roll off or slip off because there, there, there's so many of them on there, and it's, you know, it's a lot of weight, it's not going to move, but that's pretty much standard practice, so.
Okay, thank you.
If there was another way, I'd, I'd be more than happy to look at it, but I think that's how everybody does it.
This is not my field, so I'm, you know, I defer to our professional planning staff, you know, if all of these are actually in contact with each other, then they're going to be moving as a unit, and that does reduce the probability of anyone shaking off.
Right.
But, you know, nonetheless, it's a risk, I mean, it's a business risk-
It was a good concern, yeah.
That, that, I, I hope you'll find a way to manage.
Okay, thank you.
So since we have the public comment open, the only thing that I'm concerned about is the, I hear shipping container, and I know it's refurbished or new, would you be open to a condition of approval that just asks for a uniform, not uniform units, but a generally uniform appearance, sort of?
They'll, the, the company that I'm buying them from, they'll all be, those were just, they'll, well, when you say uniformed, as far as, like I said, some would be-
Similar color scheme.
Oh, they'll all be the same color.
The concern is, let's say you sell your business, and a less pleasant neighbor takes over the property.
Right.
And then you end up with rusty shipping containers that are falling apart, and they're an eyesore, right? So we do have the five-year window where we can renew, and maybe we don't need to get into this, I was just curious about your openness to having a, some, well, we don't have a design review on this, so, so again, it fits in between the gaps, so I'm just trying to determine, you know, you know, the concern about a uniform appearance, maybe we don't need to deal with it because it's going to get renewed in five years and it takes about that long for anything to really rust, so.
Yeah, and, and, you know, the way I take care of things, I mean, you know, I mean, I've got a big investment down there, so I take care of all my stuff, so those storage containers are, they start rusting, they'll get painted, so, but they're all going to be the same color, they're all going to be the same style. If they start to, you know, need maintenance done to it, we just, we maintain it, they're pretty easy to maintain.
Okay, very good.
So maybe there's some condition about being kept in good maintenance, I don't-
Well-maintained.
That would be fine, I'd be good for that.
All right, very good.
Great.
And I, so just finishing off my comments, and I'll give, yield the four, so I appreciated the seven-to-seven, maybe on Sunday, oh, sorry, through the chair, I appreciated the seven-to-seven, I do think it makes sense to have those business hours. I, I'm open to lighting that was suggested by a member of the public, Dave, we're a small group here, but low-lux cameras can provide incredibly good views these days, I just put one on my house, it's amazing what they can do. So I worry less about security than I might have before. If we do add any lighting, I, it's really important for them to be louvered down low and just light up the pavement, you know, maybe no more than four, you know, you've seen those little posts, the problem with those is that if they're going to put up meaningful light, they require electricity, and that changes the, this, then we're talking about engineering structures, and that's why I don't think he's going to be able to accommodate us, but I'm open to hearing other thoughts.
There's no external lighting on the project.
Responding to Les's comment.
Yeah, I mean, it, it could, I mean, we, we have not approved anything, but I think, given the proposal, it doesn't say no lighting, but if seven o'clock at night, if it turns out that some lighting is required, I think that would require going to the city and saying, okay, I need a permit, therefore what kind of lighting can I put in there, it can't be really, nearly, can it? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm asking amongst ourselves.
We've seen lights get installed in a stadium with no permit.
Well, but-
I think staff, would staff like to comment on this?
I would just like to note that the current resolution before you has a condition for lighting, it says that no new exterior lighting is proposed, but if it is requested in the future, it shall be subject to community development director approval, and that it shall be fully shielded, so that it's not visible.
We're good. I don't have any, so, I don't have any other comments.
Well, I just want to take this opportunity to, to say that a self-storage facility on that location on Highway One isn't necessarily my ideal use, or the highest and best use. I know that's kind of the, the use that is called for now, so I appreciate that it's a temporary use, that these aren't permanent structures, and that there's a five-year review here, so, so, you know, ultimately, I think we can all envision a, a different round use on that property, but, but in the interim, I, I'm comfortable with this one. I do appreciate the removal of, you know, one of the, one of the breaks in the Naomi Patridge Trail, you know, because that section there has just a number of different breaks, so, so that, that's nice, and, and I appreciate, yeah, the inclusion of, of the operating hours there, so, so with that, yeah, I'm comfortable approving the project.
Will you entertain a motion? So I move the resolution next in order, the la, the latest version of the resolution next in order with the addition of the seven-to-seven, seven AM to seven PM operating hours, and, is there something else that you can?
Uniform appearance.
Oh, yes, uniform appearance and maintenance.
Maybe just make sure they're maintained, properly maintained.
Yeah, yeah, maintained in good repair.
I don't think we need to worry about the, they're not going to be uniform by nature, and I think we can-
Not identical, but, you know, well-maintained and-
Earth-tone colors.
Yeah, earth, earth-tone colors, I'll go there.
Okay, very good.
I'll second.
Can I get a voice vote? Chair Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Holt?
Yes.
Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
And Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion carries, the project's approved. This item's closed. You want to retrieve, John? Just as a side note, as we wrap up that project, it's outside, I think, the scope of the, the project, but there are utility lines, there's a major utility line that comes right down in that driveway. At some point, with PG&E, with all the work they do, if that could be undergrounded, it's, it's a, it's a major, every time I pull in to, I don't get my car detailed that often, as most of you would, would notice when you see me drive it, but when I do pull in there, it's always like, oh, we've got to watch out for this thing, there is a safety hazard issue there that staff may not be aware of. The, the utility line, it's not on your project, but the public utilities is right on the driveway that, that come in.
That drops down.
Correct, so, wanted to mention that to city staff, is PG&E is always doing projects, so there may be an opportunity in the future to underground those utilities, so that it improves your project and makes it a little safer. Okay, so, moving right along, we have, I've gotten my papers out of order here, so with the, any comments from you, Jill? Community Development Director.
Very briefly, because we knew you were going to have a long meeting, we're not going to give you a full-blown director's report, we'll put it out for a couple of weeks. You will have a meeting on August 28th, and it will include a lotline adjustment of agricultural property that fronts on Kelly Avenue, so that, that will be coming forth, it's been noticed, Doug is the project planner for that. And at that time, we'll let you know about all the other things we've been up to. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, any communications from the planning commission? Excellent.
I'd just like to let everybody know, I've been gone for a couple of months, Larkin had a very successful nerve pain surgery that was down at UC Irvine, and, yay, a specialist there, that's, we're very lucky to find him, apologize for not being here for some meetings.
Life has a way of interfering with many activities, so, I'm glad to have you back, Larkin, feeling better. Okay, well, I've got a flight to catch, so can I get a motion?
Who is your hand?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.